Hello, sweetie members. This is the regular session where we are counseling the city of Bisbee, Councilor Chiefs, and the State of Arizona on the L on Tuesday, May 21st, 2019 at 7:00 PM at the Bisbee at the City Hall Building. 9:15 is out of total bill load. Ms. Coronado, would you please call the bill?
Councilmember Gabe Lindstrom?
Here.
Councilmember Joni Jacomino?
Here.
Councilmember Bill Higgins?
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns?
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hansen?
Here.
Mayor Protem Anna Klein?
Here.
City staff, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Carrie Badley, finance director, Alberta Chavez, police chief, George Castillo, fire chief, Britt Hanson, city attorney.
Thank you for a moment of silence. I'd like us all to think about the people affected by the incredible weather events that have been going on for the last several days. Tornadoes and everything else. Of course, we have seen some very strange weather ourselves with piles of hail and many other things, but no injuries that we're aware of here. So, thank heavens for that. So, join me in a moment. Thank you. Would you please stand and join me in the question. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you all. Welcome. Thank you for being here. It's nice to see a nice big crowd. I have no proclamations and I have no announcements at this particular point. So, we all get right to it. And we have calls to the public. And first one signed up to call the public is Mr. Fred Miller.
Good evening. I wanted to say for item-
It doesn't count my time, but just trying to make sense of it.
Sorry, I wanted to say for item seven, but my wife is ill and I'm going to go home. So, addressing it now. When the agenda came out, I was really disheartened to see item seven because it seemed like the council was going backwards and going over settled issues. However, since I've been thinking about it and talking to people, I've come around and I'm glad we are talking about this because it gives the council a leadership opportunity to really affirm that an adequately compensated position as tourism director is important to our community, recognizes that tourism in general has changed and our city will meet the challenges. Bisbee is an competitive, although cooperative environment. We are in competition for people, eyeballs, and dollars with almost every city and town in Arizona. The rise of the importance of social and electronic media has been rapid and has eclipsed but not eliminated visitor centers and print communication in importance. That is why it's so necessary to attract someone with multimedia skills and industry contacts and personal abilities to carry our marketing forward. And if you look at the actual economic and visitor data for the past several years, it's clear to many businesspeople that tourism has been beneficial for all of Bisbee, not just Old Bisbee. It has been a success story. People have bought houses, opened businesses, and come to live and work in all three of our districts, often because they heard of Bisbee directly through our tourism marketing. The consumptive economics of tourism means that dollars circulate in our community two, three, four times, not just the restaurants and food stores, but the hair salons, auto shops, medical clinics, home repair, body repair, nonprofits, and more. The innovative efforts of Gen Luria has expanded and changes positions. We truly need a tourism director that is responsible for many aspects of tourism and not just a visitor center supervisor. Those of us working on tourism issues for many years, in my case, it's been more than 20 years, have been heartblinded successes of the past four or five years. We want to build on those past efforts with better coordination between the- and communication between the city and the business community. And I think what unites all of us and all of our differings is a desire to see Bisbee thrive and to go forward, not backward. This is an opportunity to do so, and I hope the council will take it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Johnson.
Good evening. I'm just coming here to address what's going on tonight. The Design Review Board had put a letter, submitted a letter for you all to read about what's been going on with the Design Review Board and some things that we want. And then, we have a- on the agenda is the approval of Ben Lepley, the Design Review Board, which is put on. I'd asked the council to wait to decide that. He's already been denied in another council meeting until you read the letter from the Design Review Board this evening. It's coming up on the new business. As it turns out, Ben Lepley is a- he has a residential card for the city. That was an issue last time, but he doesn't- he does in fact not live in Bisbee. He lives in Tucson, and he'd be more than willing to admit that to you or anyone. Other than that, that's pretty much it for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Okay. Councilor Payable.
I believe that we pay the council payable in the amount of $98,014.98. Ms. Johnson?
We have a motion. We have a second to make questions. Hearing no questions. All those in favor of paying accounts payable, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carried. Going to the consent agenda. Item A through M. Council, we have a person signed up to speak on a couple of these. So, I propose to read these and then let that person speak before we take a motion. Item A, approval of the minutes of the special session of mayor and council held on May 14, 2019 at 5:30 PM. B, approval of the minutes of the special session of the mayor and council held on May 7, 2019 at 5:30 PM. C, approval of the minutes of the regular session of mayor and council held on May 7, 2019 at 7:00 PM. D, approval of the minutes of the regular session of mayor and council held on November 7, 2018 at 7:00 PM. E, approval of the minutes of the work session of mayor and council held on October 16, 2018 at 5:01 PM. F, approval of the minutes of the regular session of mayor and council held on June 19, 2018 at 7:00 PM. G, approval of the minutes of the work session of mayor and council held on May 10, 2018 at 6:30 PM. H, approval of the minutes of the work session of mayor and council held on May 2, 2018 at 6:30 PM. I, approval of the minutes of the work session of mayor and council held on April 25, 2018 at 6:30 PM. J, approval of the resignation of Deborah Crowe from the Parks and Recreation Committee. K, approval of the appointment of Benjamin Lepley to the Design Review Board. L, approval, excuse me, of a park facility in Wadaway, New York, for outstanding in the field for the use of Erie Street for the Bisbee Community Table Event to be held on Monday, October 21, 2019 from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. M, approval of the special event liquor license application submitted for an event to be held on Erie Street, Bisbee, Arizona, on Monday, October 21, 2019 from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM, Brady Meadows Apple House. Mr. St. Colin Duarte?
Duarte, yes.
Please come up.
Thank you.
I assume you can address both L and M at the same time.
Yes. I'm not even representing an outstanding in the field. Mainly, I've come to answer any questions that you may have regarding our organization and what we do. I have a couple maps if you want to take a look at them for the event permit and where we will be hosting the site. Typically, what we do, we're a farm-to-table dinner organization promoting local and sustainable food wherever we are. We work with local organizations. We- and it's just about coming to that place and celebrating the local food.
Any questions?
What brought you to Bisbee?
We've- typically, our event- well, we've hosted events in all 50 states. We've been around for 20 years. Typically, we've been in Phoenix, and we've had a couple of different people attend our events there and mention coming out here. And we thought we'd try and do that, and it's so far running a nice time.
Thank you. Any questions? To briefly summarize your event and-
Yeah, so typically, guests arrive, and we have a short cocktail hour featuring a local producer or local wine maker, and then we have hors d'oeuvres passed around from the local area as well, and a seasonal kitchen, and then a chef from Mexico is also our partnering together, and they'll be providing all the food. We work to get most of the food within 150-mile radius wherever we do the dinner. After about an hour, we do a little welcome. We have a host farmer from one of the local farms. We'll talk about the produce in the area, and then we'll sit down for dinner. We have a four-course meal of wine pairings, and then we take off for the evening.
And what is the fee?
Tickets are typically anywhere between $250, I believe $250 for this dinner specifically. With everything included, it's pretty self-explanatory. Tickets are all sold through our website.
And the money goes where?
For this particular dinner, I mean, we're paying everybody involved. So, we pay a chef fee. We pay, of course, the pain for the use of the road, and then all of our rentals, you know, everything that we're using. And we are putting a portion of the money to a nonprofit organization here that is in my email. I can't remember any of them.
The step up Bisbee?
Correct. Thank you.
That's where I was going with that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right, council, anybody have any wish to pull? Anyone? Or more?
Yes, I'd like to pull item K and possibly discuss it if we can when it comes up on agenda. Is that possible? Can we do that, or do we have to discuss it?
I'm sorry?
I want to pull item K and revisit it when the- it comes up within, I think it's number 302.
Seriesion.
Can we pull and talk about it dead if we have the time?
I'm going to have to, Mr. Higgins, if I have a free vote. Correctly, no vote of the students.
Yeah, well, there's no rule on that. The adjustment of the agenda, if you go formally by the code, requires a vote of the council, but usually it's the mayor acting in his discretion. So, you could allow it to be discussed with that agenda. So, prefer.
Okay. So, we will pull K, and we will hold that discussion and vote until item number four. So, do we have a motion?
I believe that we approve the consent agenda items A through J and L and M.
Second? Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. Ms. Coronado.
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacomino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Oh, Bisbee. I'm sorry, I remember, item number three has been pulled. Item number four, discussion regarding the Design Review Board letter of mayor and council that they would like to read into the record of the council meeting. And Ms. Johnson and Ms. Jacomino, it's more items.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Before we go to item number four, maybe item number three, the reason that it was pulled might be worth to mention because although the council is privy to that information, I'm not sure that the media or the public is.
Okay, thank you. Under item number three, it's been pulled because the Attorney General has indicated to disregard their earlier letter to us and that they've received further information and that there would be further review of the applications. Ms. Johnson.
Okay. All right. Is this on?
I don't know what's- the speaker back here has given me issues.
None of them are on. We can hardly hear any of them. It's blinking.
The speaker back here is- I don't know what's going on.
All right, we'll just yell. Okay. So, the Design Review Board has written a letter that they would like me to read at this session, and that's what I'm going to do right now. Dear Mayor and Council, subject is appointment of full board. We, the members of the Design Review Board, DRB of the city of Bisbee, are writing to urge you to take immediate action to restore the DRB to its full complement of seven members. We are a volunteer uncompensated body with individuals serving at the pleasure of the mayor and council. We exist to help maintain the historic design elements of Old Bisbee. We do this by individually reviewing applicants' plans and by discussion and debate at our public meetings. Although we have a common goal, we are a diverse group with different backgrounds, experiences, disciplines, and technical abilities. To reach a fair and balanced decision, we exchange our individual thoughts and ideas. The more members present at our meetings, the better our ability to balance the needs of the applicants with the intent of our design standards. Inevitably, we all have other demands on our time and occasionally must be excused from a meeting. Also, being a small community and with members involved in construction and real estate commerce, there are conflicts of interest to manage and consequent recusals. Being two members short of the statutory seven, as we were for the first three months of 2019, rendered the DRB only marginally functional. One meeting was canceled owing to a lack of form, and of two others, only a bare form was present. This situation does not serve the community fairly. In addition, the full board has an odd number of members, a factor which serves to avoid a tie vote. Given that a tie vote is an automatic rejection, we currently stand to have more decisions winding up at the board's adjustment. We therefore urge the mayor and council about further delay to reinstate Mr. Ken Budge to the DRB, whom the board had appointed in 2018 to serve as chairman, a clear testimony to the respect the other members had of Mr. Budge's ability and knowledge. Should the mayor and council elect not to reinstate Mr. Budge, then we further urge you to appoint an alternate candidate as quickly as possible. Respectfully, Todd Conklin, Frank Davis, Peter Gaffer, Stephen Green, Michael McPartland, and John Skye. So, we brought up the application of Ben Lepley, which Joni pulled, and now it's time to discuss that. I guess-
Discussion.
You know, John had spoken earlier that, yeah, he does have residency, a mistake on my part, but residency in the form of a paper going, which his residence is, as point number 27, Temby, and it's a company in Tucson. The house is in his name. The house is under repair. It doesn't have sewer or water going to the house, so therefore, it's truly not a residence. It's a owned establishment. It looks like there's no electricity. I wasn't able to find if there is electricity hooked up, but there are lines that run to the neighbors. The house is boarded up, and from my understanding, he does come down and work on his home, you know, which is a great thing for him to be able to work on it. But as far as counting him as a person who is readily available, six-month-out-of-the-year resident, which is generally what residency refers to, I'm seeing that we are looking at someone who is going to be more out of town than in-town and is truly serving the purpose of the Design Review Board. I have pictures of the residence that I can show you that is utilizing its residency and the condition that it's in. So, therefore, I do question that place being used as residency. When I checked on the voter registration card that he sent me when I retained it, they told me you can have two addresses. You have a mailing address, and you can have what you claim as your residency. But again, anytime you look up what residency is or tax purposes, you have to spend some place living there for six months or more, and I question that. You have a board that's spoken out saying what they would like, I would think that, or a committee, I would think that we should honor their wishes. They were a good working board, and I don't see why we don't respect what they're asking for, other than I'm setting the out of the card. And again, like I said, if you'd like to see the pictures, I printed out, I do want to have this shared with you.
Can I see this?
Yes, ma'am.
I think while we're waiting to see the pictures, I'm kind of- at a couple of meetings ago, the last council meeting, I'd asked, you know, if Ken Budge is not going to be on, maybe we can have a legitimate reason as to why. So, maybe we can have a better understanding, you know, as a council and a community as to why he's not on. And that was never given, and that was just kind of disregarded. We had unanimous six people on the board signing a letter. I mean, I don't understand why this is such a big deal. I mean, this seems like an easy decision to not do it. It's confusing to me.
Ms. Klein, do you have anything?
So, this house can't be- I mean, nobody's living in this house, is there? From my understanding of what I've been told, no, but it's been worked on, on a regular basis. But again, there's no city sewer record or log I checked on it. So, which makes that kind of a healthy issue. And again, I wasn't able to verify electricity. If you look at the pictures, you see electric lines. The front door is boarded up, you know. So, again, I just question the whole residency thing. And I understand he has his motor car here, and I mean, this is his residency, but in order to fulfill this position on one of these boards, I just think it's more prudent that we choose someone who is here regularly at least six months, seven years, or more, actually, more than that, people that are here on a regular basis when emergency meetings come up or possible work sessions come up. I mean, the simple fact that your Design Review Board members are asking for someone to be reinstated, I don't understand that we're not honoring that. There are people that have to work with each other. It really doesn't matter what- I mean, I don't mean to sound snarky, but it almost doesn't really matter what we think because we don't have to work with them. They work with each other, and they have a good working relationship. I don't see why we can't be safe there. And again, why not? Gabe's asked twice now what the initial reason was.
You know, we're all here for, you know, the city's kind of quiet itself on whether we do it or not, transparency. I mean, can we have a reason? This is a discussion.
Well, actually, this has gone way past whether it's Mr. Budge or not. This has taken on a life of its own, the council or several members of the council deciding that the mayor, through the charter, does not have the right that the charter provides.
When was that stated? When was that stated?
Ms. Jacomino, I'm not going to sit here and argue with you on this. I made a statement, and that's the state. Mr. Budge, you've asked it.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's the first time I've come before you on this particular matter, but since I see my name brought up in, I thought it might be time to address this. My application has been in now, it will be six months and one week of today. I want to try and serve. I haven't really understood why I wasn't reappointed. Out of the 14 appointments that were made that night, 13 were reappointed, one was not. It was mine. In fact, several of those, if you remember, are actually longer than they should be on and had to give waivers out of the 13. So, 13 of the 14 positions that were up for reappointment were reappointed, all but mine. So, I guess I've tried to stay out of the fray, and I'm trying to understand that I want to send a message to the people, and I'm hoping if any of this gets on the press, it's the fact that, that right now, there's 25 opens in boards and commissions that are standing, not being filled. And we want to send a message to the people that you apply unless there's some odd-god lawful reason that you shouldn't be on it, you're more than happy to come and serve the city. And what are we doing here, saying after six months of mine and the board, you know, supporting my nomination even, that I can't get back on the board? That's not sending the message that we want to send to the public, that come on, show up, we want you to come and serve our city. Thank you.
Thank you. The reply that I would have to give to that is, you indicated that you did that application, been in for six months. Yeah, this is the first time that you have addressed me in asking for one. And everybody else has been carrying the law around that.
I want us to have a party.
I will have a conversation with- I'll be more than happy to have a conversation with you.
I'd like the public to know, for the sake of transparency, because nobody knows.
I have nominated a registered architect, which I believe would be a very good addition to the DRB.
And the reason for not having Ken Budge would be?
Because I thought someone else was better qualified.
He doesn't qualify. So, we're having people fill our positions that do not live within our boundaries of regular business?
We always have.
Which is a question of why? Why are we not pouring those positions to people that live in our boundaries?
If somebody is better qualified or has a skill that can be used in a specific commission than the fact that they are not a full-time resident, or in the case of Mr. Lepley, indicates that he is.
So, are you saying you're more qualified than the six people on the board that want him on there?
I'm saying that the charter doesn't give you the right to make that appointment.
I'm not saying we want to give it, but we're just wanting to know why I am-
I'm not going to argue with you.
I know, I'm just, you know, we're talking about qualifications and what qualifications doesn't match too much, other than the knowledge that he has, that those other members have benefited from, and they will use what, to fit their needs. And again, I don't understand why we're not going with the request of the actual members of the Design Review Board, because again, they're the ones that have to work with each other. And if they're specifically requesting someone, I don't understand the premise.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would say that a concern that I have here is, looking at this application, background information relevant to serving this position, it says have done and are currently doing historic preservation projects in Bisbee and Tucson. If this is historic preservation, I'm really hesitant about it because-
I believe his historic preservation is that he's employed by the, what's it, the Business on Main, um-
Historic Museum. The museum?
Historic Museum.
The museum?
Restoration. That's the restoration, you know, historical restoration that is over.
I guess my last question would be, I guess, to Britt. If this continues to be a standstill, what do we do?
Legally, there's not a solution. Usually, it's a political solution. That's where you come to either give or compromise on both sides.
So, I guess a question for you is, could you define the term residency? Because I think I'm dying. It asks you, do you live someplace full-time or somewhere?
Yes, and the definition- Yes, and the definition we usually use for legal reasons, because it's the most well-defined, is for registering to vote. You can register to vote where you reside, and that's, it's usually an intent to reside. And based on the comments that you have made, and the fact that I'm a neighbor of Mr. Lebly, I know he does not reside there. I know he's very interested in Bisbee and has a lot of passion for Bisbee, and has, you know, excellent qualifications, but I, he does not reside there, no.
And I agree with you, I mean, I'm not taking that away, but the fact of the matter is, many of these councils, it's an issue of, you know, having people here, and I mean, they've even stated that themselves. You know, there's, you need people that are readily available, and when you work out of town, or out of town, it makes it difficult, when you have people that live in town readily available.
So what's the next step? Because every, it seemed like we talked about it in the two meetings, or meeting later, this, a name on the agenda. This cycle happens, and in the meantime, the RFP board is suffering. And so what do we do? What's a step we can take?
I move to accept the appointment of Benjamin Lebly on the Design Review Board.
I accept.
Ms. Lebly.
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Nay.
Councilmember Giacominno?
Nay.
Count, I'm sorry, Councilmember Higgins?
Yea.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Nay.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, I want you to pass this forward. Item number five. Discussion on possible authorization to accept grant funding from the Tohono O'odham Nation on behalf of the Bisbee Healing Arts Center, if funding is awarded. And we have Morgan Oxlet, are you? There you are. Judy Perry, did you also want to be with him, or speak separately, or not at all?
If there's questions.
Fair enough.
I'm just going to read this later.
Thank you.
Dear Bisbee City Manager, Mayor and City Council, Bisbee Holistic Wellness Center and 501(c)(3) organization located in Bisbee, Arizona intends to apply for funding from the Tohono O'odham Nation under the RFP for the Arizona Revised Statute 5601-02, 12% gending distribution. The RFP requires that non-governmental entities enter into an agreement with the city that agrees to accept the funding from the nation on the nonprofit's behalf. The Bisbee Holistic Wellness Center requests that the city of Bisbee agree to enter into this type of agreement so that the center can apply for these funds from the Tohono O'odham Nation. The mission of the Bisbee Holistic Wellness Center is, as holistic health providers we unite, to support and offer wellness services in a nurturing and safe environment. The center offers varying costs and free services that are well-documented approaches for alternative therapies, including Reiki, massage therapy, reflexology, hypnotic reset, individualized fitness and weight training, and acupuncture. Practitioners are able to lease space for these services at a reasonable rate. Bisbee residents can easily access these services in a convenient and centralized location in Old Bisbee, which decreases travel outside of Bisbee to purchase more services. The center is expanding the educational arm of the organization. It hosts workshops, workshops so that practitioners can access needed credential training and Bisbee residents can learn about the positive effects of alternative therapies. The center intends to use the Tohono O'odham, funding the purchase necessary equipment and furnishings to complete the workshop area of the center. It also intends to secure a paid, part-time office and workshop coordinator to sustain and increase the effectiveness of the center as a grow and expand our services. Thank you for considering your support of entering into an agreement so we can apply for these needed funds. If you have any questions, please contact Judy Perry or Gil Francis.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Nicholas Knight?
Well, I have a question, but not with that. I think it's with Britt, because there's a couple more organizations that are going to come forward with this. Someone had made a comment that, does the city have to, do they have a fee they have to pay? That's a question. They're, they're just handlers, right?
Right. The city acts as fiscal agent, which includes oversight responsibilities to make sure the money is spent on...
Okay, that's what I thought, but somebody had said, well, no, I think they have a percentage, and I wouldn't have...
There are many, there are many grants where the fiscal agent does get a percentage, but this, my experience with the Tohono O'odham grants is no, you're, you're just a pass-through.
Yeah, and some of the grants, we actually get a handle on the fee. Nicholas Knight?
Good evening, Grand Council, great to be in front of you again, Nicholas Knight, 306 Shag Street, Bisbee, Arizona. I highly recommend that you approve this. This is money that doesn't cost us anything, it's going to something that has provided for years, something extremely valuable to our community, and if you are in any doubt, I'd invite you to come up and just visit the clinic and sit, talk to the people that are receiving the benefits of it on the Saturdays when they have it, and it will clearly become evident just how good a job they're doing in supporting and filling in a gap that is, unfortunately, all too present in our healthcare system. So please, do this.
Thanks, sir. Does any, do you have any, anybody on the council have any questions about this? Judy or anybody else got any answers? No? Okay. Do we have a motion?
I move to accept grant funding from the Tohono O'odham Nation on behalf of the Bisbee Healing Arts Center, if funding is awarded.
I accept.
I agree.
All those in favor of accepting grant funding for the Tohono O'odham Nation on behalf of the Bisbee Healing Arts Center, if awarded, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. I want you to carry it down, Mr. Knight. Item number six. Discussion on possible direction to staff on how to move forward with the city attorney position. Mr. Knight, you're down there.
Great to be back, though. As far as anything I need to say, the last 12 minutes says it all. How many times has Mr. Hanson been asked a question? We need to have a term of, we need to move forward. I've shifted in how business had been done in the past, that's done, we need to find a way to move forward, and move past that. And if we are indeed going to have interactions with the state about the open meeting thing or anything, it'd be great to have somebody in place that was there from the beginning and now trying to catch up halfway through. So please, let's find a way to move forward with this and figure out what needs, maybe somebody spends five minutes, well, an hour, calling the attorneys in the city and asking what would entice them to become a workforce, so we have an idea of what seems to be in the way of people applying, and why we're not getting qualified applicants.
Thank you, sir. Council, it appears that, unless I'm wrong, if you're correctly, we have two options present. The option is to go outside for a, typically a part-time attorney, and I'm saying part-time because that's who is the only, the only one firm that's answered our RFP, RFU. And that is a firm in Tucson that also does the services for Oro Valley and for Benson. It appears roughly, looking at it, that half-time would be in the area of $190,000 to $200,000 a year. The second option is to hire in-house, meaning hire an attorney, such as we had in the past, as an employee of the city, on a full-time basis, to be available to council, the compartment heads, and everybody. And it's been suggested that that may be able to occur for an area, in a area of $120,000 plus EREs and so forth. So I think we're looking at, a total of 123 was the figure that was given to me. So it wasn't actually 120, it was more like 115 in that area. So we need guidance, we need the council to make a decision on which way they want to go, so that we can move forward. The county attorney's office will be in place only for the end of July.
End of June.
June. I was lying, hoping you could just go along with that. So we have, it is looming before us. So whichever way you want to go, we've got to move on the right way, and that's why I've asked for it to be put on the agenda, for a decision tonight as to how we're going to do it. So I'll open that up for discussion.
Mr. Lindstrom? I'd say there's another thing a little high for a city of Bisbee, for a city attorney. When you look at sites, you know, anywhere from 59 to 96, it's very reasonable. So, and I know Bisbee is a nice city and all, but it tends to inflate a lot of things, and that's, that's one of them. So I think we can buy lower, not saying.
Well, is that including benefits and everything else that goes along?
Carrie, what would EREs be in about a $90,000 salary? I'd like, can we, before we get into salaries, can we make, can we talk about a decision whether we're going to go out or, you know? And that's, I was just starting to give Mr. Lindstrom this, like...
Oh, yeah, I mean, I'm not sure, I'm not in human resources, anywhere we can advertise, I know it's going to complain, the word advertise, but, you know, anywhere we can get, yeah.
So I assume that means that you would be looking for an employee?
Yes.
All right, that's what, that's what I'm trying to get at first, is, so you would like an employee, Ms. Jackman?
I think the benefit of having an employee would be much better, there's less conflict of interest with other situations. So, yeah, I think the position should be reopened, that we have employees in the past, or we have a city lawyer, and I don't know why we're back to that.
Mr. Anderson, you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I think we should be down REs and big Brits is a thing, but that's probably not going to happen. So of course, you know, we need an employee. We've already tried your suggestion.
I agree with an employee, yeah.
Ms. Hanson?
Can't afford to not go with an employee, and I don't think 123,000 is unrealistic for an attorney, and I have to agree with Bill. Really hate to see him not be here.
Ms. Klein?
I prefer just an in-house.
All right, may I, can we, can we then indicate that we provide direction to staff to advertise for an employee attorney, and that personnel needs to do a survey of cities our size, what they are paying an attorney, and bring that back to us, but in the meantime, I mean, see, the problem is, we've got to advertise a salary that goes, goes with that. So can, can we agree on letting the personnel director? If, if it's something that, if they bring names to us, and the salary range is too high, then we always have the option of not accepting those. Time is sort of in the essence.
Can we do a range? It's like 90 to 125 or something?
What is the range of the county? For just a regular way of the county prosecutor? Where do they start?
I don't know.
Where do they start at the county?
You don't want somebody who's starting at the county doing, capable of this meter of work.
What's the base scale?
The, first of all, the EREs are about, usually about a quarter of, of the pay. So at a $90,000 salary, you're talking about $120,000 roughly. So there is some sticker shock associated with the EREs, benefits are pretty costly. But it depends on what experience level you want. I mean, if you want to find somebody that's actually done city government work before, or at least local government work, you're going to have to pay a lot more to entice them there. If you want some beginner who could learn on the job, you could maybe get somebody, you know, in the low 80s. But, yeah, the salaries for, our, our salaries are fairly high, and, and I just went out for recruitment, and I can tell you, it's really, really hard, unless you're paying really good money, to get somebody, we love our town, but most people coming from ASU and U of A and other places, they're not that interested in moving to a small town that doesn't have a target. And so you might get lucky, you might not, at a lower salary, just don't know. But I'd, I'd say you shoot for 90 and hope you find somebody that's qualified, that's interested. Like qualified, I think having some city government law background would, would be preferable, really preferable.
And so then that brings the EREs, a budget item of around 120.
Yep.
That's where the 120 figure came from.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
But will we, I mean, you've already requested staff to go out and research and find out in communities our size, and I'm sure the league has all of that. So, I mean, that will be probably having stuff to salary is when they go out, rather than just popping up something that's a couple of...
I agree, I, if, he was asking, Britt was asking a question, and was replying to that, it's my understanding, not telling us that we should...
No, I know, I just, I don't know, it's my thoughts.
Well, then what I am after is consensus from the council to provide direction to staff to advertise this position, and under a salary range that is commensurate with other similar positions.
So then we should probably call and ask for the places like Wilcox, who just renewed their city attorney for $60,000 dollars a year.
But that's, that's not a full-time position, that's, that's one of the problems...
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's why we should call and then find other jobs.
That's, that's one of the problems you're going to have, in finding comparables, is most of them have part-time attorneys, including the city of Sierra Vista, which pays 103, well, $105,000 for a half-time attorney. So you're going to have trouble in a comparable town of finding somebody that's got a full-time attorney. There may be somebody somewhere in the state of Arizona that's got one full-time attorney in a downtown city.
Maybe the part-time, I mean, who's to say, who's to say has to be a full-time position? That's not even considered.
Well, tonight's a night to consider it. Consider it.
You know, we did that a few years ago, and we had a top one, a, a top figure for it, and it overran that because we needed the attorney, and we needed the attorney's advice on a number of different things, and we ended up paying, I think it was almost twice what we had put into the budget because of that. I don't like having a part-time just because of that, because there's either the tendency to have the, the attorney providing more hours and costing more, or the people not going to an attorney, to the attorney when they really need to, and that can get us in the way of...
And on the, on the part-time attorney approach, that's basically what's been tried for the last five months, is you're basically asking for somebody to spend part of their time representing the city of Bisbee, and you got one response.
I'll subvert the advertising, you know, that's the discussion there, is, we're advertising, which, you know, we're putting it on a website, we're putting it on a house.
So when you decide that we're going to make it a full of part-time, because that's, you know, maybe it's a full-time position, your own total interest.
Okay, Mr. Lindstrom, you indicate, is it your wish for part-time?
I don't know. Well, I don't think I can make that decision right now, maybe we need to revisit this.
We haven't got time to keep revisiting this.
Have once again, make that emergency and move on, I can only do that.
You've got... You've got two meetings.
I think we've, I think we've all agreed that we would like a staff, somebody on staff, three-staff attorney. And I think all we're really quelling about right now is how much money we want to spend. And I think that Joan's concerns are legitimate, that when you put someone on staff part-time and then you end up spending way more than you expected to, it might be most reasonable to hire a full-time attorney at whatever that costs us so that we're not running into these issues with lawsuits where we end up spending way more money than anticipated with an outside firm or, you know, someone we're just contracting with. I think that that makes most sense to me is to hire someone full-time and end up paying a hundred and twenty. And we probably do need to have first, because I'm not an expert on city attorney salaries. We do need to have first, go out and look and see what that's going to cost. It's most sense to me is to give direction to staff to look into that and come back to us with what a compromise it is.
I certainly agree.
Yeah, so what we probably should do is look for a full-time attorney and have a salary around ninety thousand, which would put the cost up around a hundred and twenty by the time you get your pay and everything, is that, is that seem to be reasonable?
I'd suggest a range of eighty-five to ninety-five depending on qualifications.
Plus a Y.
Plus the benefits, yeah.
Okay, well, why don't we do that with the personnel verifying that that eighty-five to ninety-five is in the right range? Okay? Do we have that direction? Thank you, ma'am. Item seven. Discussion of possible direction of staff regarding the visitor center management slash tourism director position. There are several people that are signed up for this. The explanation for some that don't understand what was going on is that previously the council, with input from Ibisbee and the business community, the council was provided with a new job description, with that job description labeled as a tourism director. And the council passed that job description, but specifically did not pass that position authorization. So what needs to be done is the council to make the decision that they want to hire under one of these two items. One is basically a part-time position at a lower salary. The other is a full-time position at a different job description, much more, much more is needed in skill sets. And so with that, we have, yeah.
Well, thanks for hearing me a second time. I come here not to speak in favor or against the whole tourism director versus whatever, but I'm here to speak towards how you're going to pay for it. Until you set your budget and figure out really where this money's going to come from, you put in the horse weight, car weight before the horse. I mean, let's, let's be honest, the way the budget is written, in order to pay for this higher salary, you're going to go fifty thousand dollars into the, into the fund balance, which is what's left over from other years to pay for this. Well, you only have sixty-three thousand in there, so you've bloomed it in one year. So what happens next year when this person you hire, where are you, where are you going to get that fifty thousand from the next year? So until you find a way to finance this, I'm sorry, but the last mayor and council and the Ibisbee that didn't push forward and get the, the vet tax increase on the ballot pretty much cost a huge amount of money and now it's going to take another year and a half before you can ever get it back on the ballot. So figure out how to, to finance it, give it to the city, new city manager, hopefully you can have, and, and work it out from there. You would never hire a police officer, you would never hire a pub, a parts person if you didn't have the money to pay them the next year. So I personally don't want to see my tax money out of the general fund fifty thousand next year to help pay for this, when I think those funds could be used for something that the public may want more so, which would be pay for kids' swimming lessons, to pay for, we can think of a thousand things. So I guess my situation, what I've seen here and as of the thirtieth of this last month, you only brought in a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars into the, into the vet tax, into the transit room, which is your, your budget, but yet next year, now this is only two months ago, you've got a hundred and twenty-five thousand brought in, but you're saying you're going to pay a hundred and sixty-four thousand out next year. I mean, the numbers aren't adding up, it's time to go back to your budget. Look at what, what you have done this year and plan on next year and make the job pay what you can afford. Quit paying things that you can't afford for more than one year.
Mr. Page?
Good evening, sir mayor, council members, staff. My name is Rob Page, I'm the colonel of Bisbee House of Tops Group and I'm a member of the Ibisbee committee, your Ibisbee committee. I'm here along with Stan Stern, our chairman, and Kerry Thompson, the director of the Bisbee Museum and its world museum. It was a short time ago that I spoke on behalf of our committee to encourage your consideration regarding vital importance of leadership from a tourism director and the associate pay rate. And although we didn't find the candidate we were looking for in the first round, we were hopeful that the process was underway during expedite, I mean, round of candidates. We're convinced, that you all know the importance of tourism in Bisbee and the significant amount of sales tax it's generating. And we would all agree that it's critical, is a critical component of Bisbee's overall income, given the budget crisis that we all face. The tourism department, along with the police and fire departments and ancillary services, are the only departments that provide a tangible return on your investment, i.e. for the money that we invest, we get a return that is substantially greater. If you consider not just the impact of tourism on downtown, but also the community as a whole, people directly involved in tourism live and shop all around Bisbee. They buy food at Safeway, they buy the tools at B and D and Ace, their landlords pay sewer and garbage bills, our police and fire answer their calls, they support dentists, lawyers, nurses and mechanics, and they educate their children in Bisbee schools. They play with this ball and they grow up there. Tourism supports all of us in every ward. Our concerted efforts to promote Bisbee as a destination over the past six years have provided significant returns. Under former tourism manager, Bisbee has received numerous accolades, I'm sure you know most of them, best southwest small town, USA Today's list of ten best small southwestern towns, ten singleest small towns in America, my favorite, promos, which designated Bisbee as one of the top places to go in two thousand and eighteen in the world. MSN vote is one of the best one to five small towns in America and several more. The tourist season, as experienced in Bisbee, is usually concentrated in the winter and spring months, plus the three good holidays. But the impacts of our former director marketing for the tourism, we had a lot of different names for it, her efforts were also visible as our tourist season now extends into late spring and early summer months. This is not an accident, this is something that takes a lot of effort. The absence of a tourism director has left a tremendous hold of that and it's important you don't delay this process because when you have momentum, it's important to keep it moving, especially with this position. A competent, strong and productive tourism director will ensure that we maintain and grow this industry and a vibrant economy that we have right now and ensure that we keep this momentum in the event of the economy declines. Our efforts over the next few months to balance the budget will be difficult.
We're out of time.
Oh, that's it?
Yes.
Well, I apologize, I was going too far. I need to follow Mr. Bud, so I won't be doing anything on that, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. She's got a way to pay for it. Cynthia Conroy.
So when does the bill start? Hi, so you all know me and you all know Cynthia Conroy, president of the Bisbee vote in the tourism industry for twenty-nine years, also a resident raising three children in the school here and owning a home in Warren and a business in an overnight lodging in old Bisbee. So I drive back and forth and around the community quite a bit, half, just the credit, for a number of years. So accolades are great and for sure Bisbee has been, as far as tourism is concerned, on an upward scale and just as much as the last few years have brought accolades. You should know that the Bisbee one thousand over that same period has now, it now sells out. Five months before the event, it's ninety percent full, right now it'll sell out within the next thirty days, the people from thirty-four states. So all of us contribute in our own ways. We've got people who are heard great, the Bisbee Tourism Center has been doing social media and taking people, making them love this town for the last couple of years. Rob Page has been instrumental for almost as long as I have, I've been here twenty-nine years, his business has been busy for seventeen. The museum has been here forever, people love it, Kerry does a great job of managing it, making it grow. There's so many pieces to this puzzle. So I just want to say one thing, Ken is correct, you can't afford what you want for what Ibisbee wants. I looked at the math this morning, thanks to, so I'm giving you the budget, I won't mention the names, and it's really simple. If you want to save fifteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars, don't hire a full-time person. You could do, this is a, three choices you have, wait for the new CM, who hopefully will have good ideas, but hopefully won't do it tonight, that would be my hope. Think outside the box, which means to save that fifteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars right here in the budget Ken was referring to, means you don't hire a full-time person or maybe even a part-time person, what you hired is what Bisbee vote has to have. Bisbee vote can only afford an adversary to a board and executive committee, one part-time person, that's me. My eighteen hundred month salary has an eight hundred dollar, you know, FICA, Medicare, ASRS, you name it. Your salary of fifteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars, excuse me, not salary, that's what your person, if you hire a full-time person, that's how much you're paying to the state and the feds. Okay, instead you hire a consultant, Bisbee has a great consultant, we've always used consultants, a part-time person, salary, and a consultant, why? Because that's what we can afford. You all could actually go out in this community locally, not outside with the big salaries, locally and find people whose skills are so, they'd only fit every bill in your director's job, high school, I mean, college graduate, extreme computer skills, friendly with everybody. Open it up as a consulting position just for six months. Strategically make a decision to not do anything you planned to do. Think outside the box, it works for us, it can work for the city of Bisbee, thank you.
Christina Bosensia.
Good evening, mayor and council and citizens, business owners, et cetera. We all know that tourism matters. How much it matters, how much we can afford is the issue. And as far as how much it matters to the businesses of this community, I can tell you it matters enough for them to take money out of their pockets to sponsor this brochure with seventy businesses in every ward and knocko. It is not just an old Bisbee brochure promoting tourism in Bisbee. And Bisbee is a destination. It serves us all as they've mentioned before me, the trickle-around effect, you know? It helps the businesses, they spend money on repairs at the hardware store, blah, blah. We know it, that tourism is strong, when tourism is strong, the economy is strong. It's important that these seventy businesses are represented by this council and that their values are represented. What they value and invest in, and that's tourism. How you do it, that's your job. Figuring it out, how the budget can be worked so that we can maintain the highest quality of representation across the state as our past tourism representative, manager, director did. She did us a great job, brought us great recognition, we can't stop now, find us a way. Find us a way, we all benefit, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, Nicholas and Angel.
Mayor and council, I do not envy you. This is a tough thing because on one hand you have fiscal reality and there are walls up against which you cannot pass. On the other hand, if nobody knows about Bisbee, it doesn't matter whether we have a new science center, it doesn't matter whether we have a pool with lap swimming in the morning, it doesn't matter if a report comes through and we open up trails for running and for biking, it doesn't matter if the weather's wonderful, because if they don't know, we're not here. And when we're not here, they don't come, they don't spend money. Somehow or another, we have to maintain visibility and has been brought, has, has been brought up by members of you tonight. A great job has been done, momentum has been gathered. I'm not sure how I would proceed if I were in your seats, but I would consider that if you do not put in some seed money, any of us who will tell you, if you put an empty guitar case out, you're going to go home with an empty guitar case. We do not put out some seed money to keep this momentum going. Over the course of the next three or four years, you're going to see things continue to sag. There's a group of businesses around subway and sheer and we got together to do a cleanup and repainting of the curves last Friday night from six p.m. to eight p.m., Friday night, right behind Western Bank, right downtown. You know how many people we had to ask to stay off the wet paint on the steps for two hours on a Friday night right downtown? Eight. That is not something that fills me with confidence. Please do something, find a way to keep things moving forward, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Okay, this is a, I had to be for us to make a decision and provide guidance to staff and particularly personnel as to how to proceed on this. Two job descriptions. I've received numerous calls and emails, et cetera, from the business community asking for us to certainly go with the new job description, which we authorized people to get together to put together and we passed. And so that's, that is my suggestion and I'll be happy to hear from others. Mr. Lindstrom?
As, as for clarification, so what are we doing different now that we didn't do up anywhere?
You are authorizing hiring the position. All we did in February is we passed a job description in which there were two and which we've discussed in the budget meetings, that we had to have a decision made before we could finalize the budget.
Didn't they have somebody hired?
No, they had somebody to interview.
I thought they had a candidate picked out already.
They had a candidate interviewed and that candidate was not hired.
So if they wanted to hire him at that time, they couldn't hire him?
They would have brought it to the council. They would have brought it to the council.
But they had that up description and all that, right?
They, they used the job description for that individual.
So we could no longer use that? Is that what we're saying?
No. I'm sorry.
We're okay to hire, is that what?
We're okay, the, that we will hire under, we have two-tier job descriptions, and we are providing staff the direction that we want the higher-order job description A or job description B. Job description B is what the business community or the ones that have contacted me are, are asking for, what we've heard several today, and that's a full-time position as a tourism director.
So what's A?
A is the one that had been in effect previously, and that was Visitor Center Manager.
The most one was, the last one was Visitor Center Tourism Director that we approved.
Okay.
It was Visitor Center slash Tourism Director.
Correct.
That was approved.
The job description was approved. Yes, ma'am.
But now we're on A and B. Just a minute. That was one choice.
Just, just a minute.
I guess, I mean, yes, we did approve the director position, but we still have on the books the Visitor Center Manager.
Yes, ma'am.
So we can go under either. I guess my concern is when we first started the budget, Mr. Pocken did tell us that we would not have enough money to fund this position. And the fact that the, that extra one percent of the bed tax was allowed to, sunset was allowed to expire. I mean, I, I know what, what, what wishes are, but I guess the bottom line is we have to stay within budget. I mean, we're still looking at ways of cutting anywhere from, what, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand to seven-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand. So I think us, funding a position that we don't have the money to cover is not how we're going to meet our goal of, of cutting back. I think the, the manager, the Visitor Center Manager that we had before, the position is still there, and we've worked well under it. That's within our budget. I think we can do that. And then when we get to the point of where we can go out to the general election, to the voters to approve, I mean, I don't have an issue going out and requesting that one percent increase, additional increase to the bed tax to fund a position. But until we can do that, I, I, I think we need to stay within our means.
Yeah, the, the higher position, the tourism director position is in the budget. So letting me know that that is what presently we, we, we all discussed, we put the higher amount in the budget in case we were going to go that way.
And I thought that Mr. Pocken said the only way that we could fund that was by eliminating the part-time position at the satellite center, the...
What he, what he said was that we were going to have to find seventeen thousand dollars. That's what he said.
And he said which would...
And he said coincidentally, that is...
Right. So I, so again, if, in order to fund that, are we going to eliminate a part-time position?
That would be upset.
See, and I, I don't know. I just, I think we really need to discuss this after budget time. I mean, to, to do this right now is putting the cart before the horse. I don't know. I just, I don't think we should do this at this time.
Okay, well, you're, you're catching on. I'm sorry, Mr. Lindstrom, if I may say, before we walk out, check him out.
Well, hi, this is Al. Could we know where our city manager spots are on this, since he's not here? I mean, would we know? Or he's waiting on us?
Well, since he is here as an in-room, my understanding of talking to him was that he wasn't leaning anybody, knowing that it wasn't a position that he would be probably involved in. Miss Chapman.
What's the soonest that we can get back on the ballot that's going on, the tax?
You can't, well, unfortunately, I mean, it's, we were told that the, the last council failed to put it on and so forth, but what has happened is the state legislature has once again preempted everything and has indicated that this type of measure can only be put on the general election every four years.
Every two years. It's, it's the general election, twenty-eighteen, twenty-twenty, twenty-two, twenty-four.
So, right now, the budget only has enough money. Is that to fund it at the highest end or is that about to fund the mid? Because you just said that, you guys funded, money finance funded with the thought that this might hurt.
I could be wrong, but I thought it was mid-range. It's, it's mid-range.
Is it mid? Very good.
Give me the date.
Ms. Jones?
I agree with Anna. I think we need to revisit this after the budget. I'm not ready to say right now what we should do with that.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So can you give me a number of mid-range? I'm sorry. A rough, a rough number, Kerry, could you give me a rough number of mid-range salary?
Fifty-eight to forty is what's in the budget.
Okay, so I guess I, so I guess my question is of the applicants that you had, how many potential were even that high, would have been, would have been considered that high? Does that make sense? Yeah, you had a bunch, you had a pool of applicants, okay? Of that pool of applicants, would there have been many of them that would have even reached that mid-range or not?
Most of the applicants were old applicants under the original Visitor Center Manager position.
Okay.
And so those were kept. And so I can't answer, I can't answer that question.
Okay. Because I mean, one of my concerns was the lack of, I guess, tourism experience, you know, for what I saw, more illustration. I mean, you know, that, that's my concern. Are we really getting applicants that are truly what we need for this position? I know when you go for work, some of the positions, there's a, there's a state, a national site you can go to, and I'm just curious, have we, have we advertised on that? Seeing what the ranges are that they're paying, they're also, you know, are they all starting at the mid-range we're talking about or starting lower? So are we, I guess my point is, as I ramble, is there a way that we can finagle?
And they did.
Necessarily, okay.
Yeah, they, they, to come up with that sound range, they did, they did a, a study of comparable jobs.
That's, that's what I mean. I, what I mean is, is there a way that, that we could, if we're staying on the low end, you know, with the potential of it going higher? You know, because you have, your low end is, what, forty-six thousand? You know, I mean, if we stay on the low end, can we still, if someone was hired at the low end, can you still have those positions? Are still in the budget for those positions? If someone was hired for, does that make sense? Forty-six, you just said seventeen for the part-time position. So is there sixty-three thousand dollars in the budget? Is my point, I guess, would that cover it? Is there a necessity that you, you, I mean, obviously if somebody great and wonderful comes through, I mean, it would be unfortunate.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the whole, that's the whole point of having the spread there is that spread is available depending on their experience.
I get that. But I just thought maybe there's a way you can work around it with the, you know, possibility of this being intense. You know, this is what we're working at in terms of, with the potential, you know, for a potential raise if funds are there. Because as contracts are written, you know, at this set rate, if funds, you know, with an increase, potential increase in the future of funding, I guess.
Okay, that's, again, is dependent on personnel. What, what we're after is a consensus on, on which way we're going to ask personnel to proceed. And I've heard two people say that they don't want to proceed at this point. And I haven't heard from the same zone.
Correct me if I'm wrong, those of you who are, have been up to the microphone, but I've heard a couple of people say that they're already feeling the impact of not having a tourist director. And Jen Loria did an absolutely fabulous job in promoting Bisbee, and that promotion benefited everyone. And whether you like it or not, we're a tourist town. This is where we get our bread and butter. And it's, we have, I, I really feel very strongly that we have to have a good tourist director in order for our community to get the money that we need in revenue. What is it, forty percent of the revenue comes from tourist?
Yes. Forty percen, forty percent of your taxpayer, of your sales tax dollars emanate from tourism.
So, you know, it's not a matter of, you can not want to do this, but you're doing that at the detriment of Bisbee. Because that's where we get the money. We get money from other places, but forty percent of it's coming from tourism. Why would we not want somebody who knows the business and knows how to make the most money out of it? Jen Loria, when, when she was here, in one year, she had so many articles in different places that it was, the publicity was worth over one-point-four-million dollars. And I'm sure that the, the business owners saw that, saw an increase due to that. I say we can't afford not to do this.
She did it for forty thousand dollars?
Was Janet Burisander as good as her?
Well, yeah, she was the manager. It was the manager.
She, uh...
She did above and beyond.
Yeah, that she did many things best beyond in, in, on her own time. So beyond the job description. Yes, ma'am.
Again, we don't have a Chamber of Commerce, and the Chamber of Commerce would fill this need as well. Has, has anybody out in the community talked about that or...
Absolutely. I, I, in fact, have another meeting tomorrow morning about it. But we have found, we've had several business meetings and, and that have been well advertised. And the majority of the committee does not want a Chamber of Commerce.
But that's kind of what the Chamber of Commerce...
Well, I'm, I'm telling you what they, what they...
I, well, I know, I'm just saying that that's kind of their job. I think if you have a strong chamber, everybody would benefit.
We don't have a chamber, so...
Yes, Ms. Jones?
Oh, I was just going to say, I'm all for this. I think it would be great to promote Bisbee in the way it's been promoted over the last several years. My concern is affording it.
Well, I, I do understand that, but I think that we keep talking about the bed tax. I do understand totally why we're talking about that because that's directly where the salary is coming from. But we also, with forty percent of the dollars coming from tourism going into the general fund, that's also where dollars are pressed.
Well, and that's true. You know, we're, we're really gambling on this person because we're going to hire it.
I'm sure on this, you know, there's, there's no guarantee we're going to get another Jen.
Yes, sir. Mr. Higginson?
Yeah. There's nothing we can do about the bed tax until it's won. But very few jobs in the city actually generate money. Most of the jobs in the city cost us money. This tourism director job should generate, it should pay for itself. If we get a person in here who's doing a good job, who's actually increasing tourism, increasing amount of money that's being spent, they'll pay for themselves. This job will pay for itself. And if I hire somebody to work in my bodega in the convention center, that, that person has to make money, otherwise it's just charity. I just have to stand and rock. But if we get a person who's going to get out there and do the job and hustle and bring some money into the city, then, you know, as long as they're generating tourism here, they're going to pay for their own, they're, they're going to pay for that salary themselves. So, yeah, we don't have the money. We don't have the money for a lot of things, you know? But I think it would be short-sighted not to go with the tourism director. And how are we going to pay for it? Well, we have discussions coming up to and to.
I, I think, and that's what, that's what I'm confused too, because it comes right down to what we decide on this person, which is, you know, it's a new position. Are we going to eliminate someone else's job, the part-time position? And then what's going to happen with them? What, and exactly how much money are you talking? Because you were saying it's a part-time position seventeen, is that what you said? Is that roughly? I'm just asking roughly.
I, I think roughly.
So we're looking at seventy-five thousand, just some change technically for these both positions. If you go mid-range, fifty-eight. Again, you know, is there, I guess, any other way you can start a little less than mid-range? I mean, is it, is there a guarantee? You know, with, with that assumption, if you hire someone, that, yeah, you can start at this range, but, you know, with that increase, I, I don't know if you want to call that performance pay or, you know, whatever, but with the potential of an acreage within this budget. I mean, again, either way is a crapshoot. It's a crapshoot for them, but at least we're getting that person in that position. And with the fact that they could make, you know, more in next year if, again, if the cards should play, but if we get the, because there's no guarantee that the politician goes in, that's the other thing.
I thought that that figure of fifty-eight was in the budget just to cover it. We don't necessarily have to get somebody for...
That's what I'm trying to say. My concern always is, is that fifty is there, but that fifty doesn't include that other person, you know, a part-time person? So for the sake of hiring that fifty-eight, are we going to, you know, cut that person loose? I'm just hypothetically speaking. That's why I'm saying, well, like, you just...
The other part-time person is, is in the budget also.
Okay, it's already, well, that's my, you know, my question. Is that all already included or something? But, and again, is there a, do we have to hire them at the mid-range? I mean, is there a guarantee that someone's going to have that?
Well, no, but again, that's going to be up to personnel and then working at us saying we recommend that we hire this person at S and L because of their training, experience and so forth.
So then if it's in the budget, where are we in the shortfall? As far as money goes, are we in the shortfall because we're not generating tax? Is that tax, is that what it is? Is that for this year or is that going to be for the following year?
It's for both.
So...
For half of this year.
So for half of this year.
Yes, ma'am.
One possibility is, is this. I think a couple, I hear a couple council members wanting to, council members wanting to wait until you have the budget session to figure out where you got the money to come from. But I have to tell you, it's been my experience that in a recruitment process for any position, by the time that budget meeting comes around, if you started the budget, or the, the hiring process tomorrow, you're still not, you're not going to get there till you'll have a final budget. So you'll know what you're dealing with. You could put it out for both the Visitor Center Manager, which is job description A, and Visitor Center Manager and Tourism Director B, and see what, 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 you know, the universe brings in. And, I don't know, just, just a thought so you can get the process going. Because otherwise, by the time you get the final budget approved, you could start, make a decision in, in July, and now you're talking September before you've, you've got somebody. So, just a thought.
We only opened it for the one position, it was last week. The applications were only open for the one position.
Yes, they had already been opened for the other one. Yes, ma'am. And they, and a number of those people were asking. They either didn't fit the requirements or they didn't want a full-time job, as I understand.
I have a copy if you'd like to see the budget sheet.
Thank you, Mr. Bud.
You also have to remember that the last person already said, you know, it's paying a lot of money and they're going to bring, they're going to make it up in their, with their work. Let me see how that worked out. Our last CM. Can I just say that again? We get what we pay for, we're going to pay people a lot of money.
Can I just go?
That's what they do. Our last CM. We're in the hole right now, partly because of that.
We're not going to, we're not going to, you're off topic. We're not going to, that's it.
Wrong.
So I need a consensus to, for, for staff. Well, I don't know about you, but...
Well, I don't know about a consensus, but I think we should go with the tourism director, and hopefully we'll get somebody who brings lots of money.
So do I.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you repeat what you said, Rick?
I said, if, even if you started the posting process right away, before you get to any, anywhere close to a hiring decision, you will have gotten to the budget and dealt with the budget issues. So if it turns out in the budget issues, you decide you're just going to have to slash, slash, slash everywhere, including the tourism director, well, you know, you still haven't made any, you haven't had any decisions that are going to fatally undercut you on the budget.
Right.
That's what I was wondering, if you, if you went out now with the posting, then by the time you get around to the budget, you'll...
So I thought, speaking of that were to occur, would it be not wiser to open both AM?
That, that's your call, I was just suggesting a mechanism. I mean, if you wondered my thoughts on it, yeah, I think you'd do both, because you don't know what you've got out there in the world.
B is in the budget. The higher number is in the budget.
Did Mr. Pocken tell us that we were going to be short?
We're going to be $700,000 in Georgia. Today, anyway.
Okay, so then, why on earth would we go out and fund a position that we may burn, or recruit for a position that we may not be able to fund?
On the same question, why on earth did the council come up with enough additions to the budget for us to be $700,000 in the red today? The same answer, these are items of individuals that were necessary for us to put into the budget, to then come back on a second look and decide on a priority level what is the most necessary.
And that's what I'm saying. I would like to see us hold off on which one we go out for, whether it's a director or manager, until after the budget is set and we know what we can fully fund, without cutting that part-time position or any of that. I mean, I just, I think we need to know our numbers and have our numbers set before we go out.
Your opinion's been... Sorry. Ms. Lindstrom, where do you stand?
I stand with, I kind of practice what I preach here, and, you know, I wish everybody would do it, even though I don't totally agree with that, these are the committees I respect that they have to say. I wish we do that with all our committees, and that's where I stand.
So you're recommending the tourism director position?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Ms. Jackman?
I'm going to recommend it also, if it comes down to it, and you have to slash it, I hope people understand, you know.
Mr. Higgins, I understand that, it's your position, but... Okay, that is mine. Ms. Jones?
Well, based on what Rick says, if we are starting a hiring process now, and we are through the budget, and we get to this, and we figured it out, then I'll recommend we go over to it.
Ms. Hanson, I believe I understand your position, and I believe we understand your position, Ms. Hanson. So the, the direction of staff at this particular point is to have the personnel director look to fill a position of tourism director under that particular description in solid language. Thank you. City manager report, we have none, and we have Ms. Hanson on comments.
Thank you. Now that everybody's leaving, as you know, this coming weekend is Memorial Day weekend, and we're trying to find my notes on this. And there's a lot going on. And first of all, I hope that everybody has a sick and fun weekend, but please take the time to also remember those who sacrificed their lives so that we could live in freedom. The Memorial Day plans, on Monday, May 27th, at 8 o'clock, there will be a flag-raising ceremony at the Lavender Pet. Excuse my voice, but the allergies have just gotten to me. At 10 o'clock, Evergreen Cemetery, they'll have a Memorial Day ceremony, and then at 11 o'clock, at Memorial, or Memory Gardens Cemetery, they will have a ceremony. After that ceremony at Memorial Gardens, or Memory Gardens, there will be hot dog chips, punch after the ceremony, to the Surges of DFW Hall, courtesy of DFW and the American Legion. If you would like to help with placing the flags, they will be placing flags on the veterans' graves on Saturday, May 25th, at 8 o'clock at Memory Gardens, and 9 o'clock at the Evergreen Cemetery. And the removal of the flags from the cemetery for storage at the DFW Hall will be on Tuesday, May 28th, and then it'll be 8 o'clock for Memory Garden and 9 o'clock for the Evergreen Cemetery. If you have any questions, please call Smoothie at 249-1405, or Grace at 227-2994 for more information.
That it?
Nope, one more. Also, the city pool will be opening this Friday, and it'll be open seven days a week. The lap swim will be 8 to 12, open swim 1 to 5, kids 5 to 15, $1, adults 16 to 64, $4, and seniors 65 plus is $3. So please enjoy your weekend, come out to the pool, go to the ceremonies, and I wish you all good health.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? I have to be there. All those in favor of adjournments? All those in favor?